Thank you. All right, thank you. We're moving to change that amendment. It's in the changes right now. Yes, very quickly.
Can you please tell me how many renters we have here?
Have you one?
Renters, is it over the 25%?
Michael might be able to address that. What's the percentage of renters, Michael?
Well, no, but I propose the rule on the 25%.
You own a renter yourself?
Personally, yes, I have three renters.
Do you live here?
No.
How do you want to work?
You're allowed to be on the board.
I'm allowed to be on the board, but being an owner here, that's the...
That's for me on the board, right?
Absolutely not. This group? No.
You wouldn't do this.
There are people like you, I guess.
It seems like it was like five or six against two. And you argue everything without whether it's legal or not, or whether we as owners are or not.
Well, wait, wait. You're going to be given some choices to vote on some questions that are going to be going out very shortly, okay? We try to get democratic as possible here at Condo Union.
You'll have a chance to vote on these amendments.
And you'll have a chance to vote on these decisions coming up. It's going to be right after, just a couple minutes.
Can anybody ask a question? What's the percentage of renters now? Does anybody know?
Does anybody know what the percentage of renters are currently here?
No. They have it current, accurate.
I'm working it out. I'm looking for that 25%.
It would be a guesstimate, because...
Probably 40%.
Probably not 50%.
I hope it's over 25%.
Probably 60%.
I report what we know of. What is legal to know.
What it should be is 25. We have no chance to back it up.
I'm trying to calm down here. Let's check what we can see. We're going to get it.
That's bad.
Find out who's renting.
All right, we need to come to order. We need to come to order. Let's come to order. Yes, Linda. Yeah, we're sending out this package. We're voting and then you...
I just want to say one thing, that the entire county, you know, is the kind of thing that we make arrangements, proper arrangements with those people who are in standing so that foreclosures do not occur. So what we are doing is more with what is, you know, uniformly suggested to be right at this time.
We're trying to abate the foreclosure rate, and the foreclosure rate is getting very bad. All right, thank you, Linda. Hold on a second. Jerry, you want to say something real quick? Let's go. Jerry, go ahead.
It's on the same subject.
Go ahead.
Actually, I personally have a situation that is right in line with that hardship, except I don't have a hardship. But I do have a unit that I owned for more than a year. And the amendment that was passed by the majority of the owners allowed rental to go from two years of no renting to only six months of no renting. And that was approved by the owners. Once it came back, the board took hold of it and decided that the board had to approve what the owners already approved. And now they want to move it from six months to a year. My situation is, I own the unit for more than a year, so I qualify whether it's six months or whether it's a year.
It's not approved yet.
No.
Why not?
Ah, two years.
I understand. Only because the board is hijacking the owner's approval, okay? So I intend to rent the place because I qualify whether it's six months or a year. You and you want to stay in on ceremony, and you don't want to make a good business decision. You only want to make a decision based on you wanting to be right, okay? We're a community. We're a community.
Let me finish, let me finish, please.
Yeah, go ahead. I love talking to you.
You can't do it. The board approves it, and it is recorded.
Even though the owners have already approved it.
Yes, it's in the book.
The last time we were here, and Francis insisted on the board approving, you didn't want to have the board approve. You felt the owner's approval was enough. Now, now you want the owners to approve and the board to approve. Well, again, I'm just saying that I qualified whether it's six months or a year for my unit, okay?
You don't qualify for two years, which is why it's not approved now.
I understand that. I understand, I understand, okay? But I'm just trying to tell you that you sticking with the rule rather than, you know, in this other case, there makes good business sense to allow the fellow to rent other than to let it go with the foreclosure. Because if we let it go with the foreclosure, we're going to lose the assessment, which may be eight or nine thousand dollars on that. So I don't know how you win by not letting a guy who had to leave the area through no fault of his own and is willing, even though he... Wait a second. Right, that's his hardship. Right, that's it. Well, you voted against the hardship. You voted against the hardship. But now you say you want to approve it? Now you want to approve it? Oh, you won. Okay. Well, I think it should be approved because the guy is not delinquent, okay? And if he gets delinquent and he's underwater in the ownership of it, then he's going to let it go to foreclosure. That does not benefit the association. That does not benefit you, whether you're a business person or not, but that does not, that does not, that does not benefit the association.
One hundred and fifty people.
That's fine. If it was the same problem, I would answer the same way. It benefits the association, and it does not benefit the association. In this economy, in this economy, the government, the government is lending money to banks. Your money and my money. That's not the way it works, because that's what they're doing without your permission. But troubled times need special ways of handling situations. And if you're trying to promote the moment for that and let people see, okay, there's going to be more foreclosures. Right now, more than half of this...
Jerry.
More than most...
Jerry, first of all, let me...
More than half of the sales today are through foreclosure because the banks are not willing to talk to the owners.
Jerry, I voted, I want the six-month rule. Speak to the others who don't want it. It should have been approved.
Then you'll be happy to vote.
Sorry, Mr. President. Resident community vote.
It's got to be approved on the books.
That's a tactic, that's what I call a tactic down. A tactic down.
There's a little technique down. That's the way to have a little mentality.
All right, Jerry's point, Jerry's point is now taken into the floor. Michael, it was already approved by the residents. The board had no right to change it, as Scott originally said. It was already approved. The six-month period was already approved by the residents.
But the board has the votes for it.
It was already approved by the residents. The six months. It's on it for six months, was already approved by the residents.
It's not where you go. It's not there the board approves it, and it's recorded.
Well, then, take it to the scale. Marvin?
Yeah, a question was asked more than once, and I'm waiting to hear an answer. And that is, how many of our 832 units?
That's the question I have.
Excuse me? You don't have an consensus.
Okay. I've heard month after month after month after month after month, we don't know, we don't know. What are you, the board and management, doing to get that answer?
Would you like to head that committee? Marvin?
First, I want the answer from the...
All right, no, Marvin, would you like to head a committee to vote door to door and find out who's renting? I'd be glad to put you in charge.
First, may I give a piece from management? What is management doing to provide? That's one of your jobs. What are you doing to give us the answer?
Well, stop, I'll answer you. We said it three times. The board, as I said in my report earlier, we met with the owners of K W, one of the owners, and senior management. And basically, we've got a plan to do a census of the community, a door-to-door census.
Wait.
To identify, it's in the works, because we're going to do the water at the same time. Check the water. We're going to do the two together.
So you're going to do the water leak, AC check, and a census.
And that will try to...
Broke that last month's meeting.
Well, that was one question I was going to have.
Were you renting? A lot of them were renting.
Okay, so the question is, this is what the plan is. Can you tell me, not exactly appropriately, when you're going to institute that, in one week, one month, next year, approximately?
The office decided at that meeting is that we may have to bring another staff on just for that process. Because you can imagine, it's 832 units.
Right.
And to pull a staff member out of the office to help with that, we don't have the manpower for it. So we may have to hire someone on a part-time basis. Now, we may use a person who's there, we're still working on that.
So you think we'll have an answer in a week, a month, six months?
I certainly don't think it's a week. It's going to be a long process. To go through 832 units and check toilets and check leaks and do a census in a week?
When will it begin? When will you begin the process?
We can get it begun in a week. What we've done is also identified the buildings with the most water usage so far. We'll start with the Bordeaux actually. We'll start with that building, and then move on.
I'm hearing that, that's really now.
Would you like to volunteer?
By the time...
Would you like to be a volunteer now?
By the time of the next board meeting.
Would you like to volunteer, because we can save some money this year?
Absolutely, I'll volunteer.
Oh, don't lie.
So this will begin by the next board meeting.
Okay, well, could we meet tomorrow so we can look at the place? Could we hire a volunteer?
Then it doesn't matter if we're renting out one day or here.
It's okay, I've got two volunteers. I've got two volunteers.
Three, three.
Get there, I hope we have volunteers.
We have two volunteers. Excellent.
We're over that percentage already, so you don't have to run anything around.
All right, Marvin, you're going to be heading that committee. All right, please.
There is no more renters.
Uh, yeah, would you, you know? James?
My new building?
Shh.
There's some courtesy.
All right, Linda, thank you.
Please, Jerry, I would like Jerry, because he pointed his finger, to please respond to his remarks.
Jerry, right there, yes, respond to his remarks.
And I think his decision is a very good business decision for Jerry.
Can I speak a little louder?
I think Jerry's request, and that it's a good business decision for Jerry, but it is not a good business decision for me and all these other people that own units. And it just seems like my building has like 60% rentals. I invite each of you.
Wow.
Marseille, I don't know many people there, but people are putting their cigarette wets out and all in the elevators. The place is shabby and dingy and...
That doesn't mean they're renters, they could be owners.
It stinks. I do not believe that owners will do that. I invite all you...
Do you know they do?
I invite all of you to come down to my building, which is Marseille. Get off on the elevator on the second floor and walk the halls. Go down the back steps and see if it does not stick to high heaven. We've had blood on the wall. We've had fights there.
Okay, Jane, uh, well, you know, I know there's problems. There's problems in Marseille, in Bordeaux, in the Nouvelle Eglise.
Okay, okay. If I call next month, because I just had a very expensive wedding for my daughter. So if I call next two months and say, I probably have a hardship because I went through this wedding, I can't afford my maintenance fees, are you going to treat me an exception?
We will take that into consideration, thank you. All right, thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
All right, let's move along. I hope you never have a hardship, Jane.
Hey, one quick thing.
Up to the mic.
Joe doesn't need a mic. Go ahead, Joe.
One thing that nobody's talking about here is selective enforcement. One gentleman mentioned discrimination. It's selective enforcement. If you want to do a case study, okay, it goes back to even cats and dogs. It starts at that level, selective enforcement. And it goes right up to business. And nobody, and I'm going to say this, the people you hear in here are the investors. They're everyone's that are making the money, and the association supports them.
Selective enforcement means you're showing people favors. We're judging everybody equally. If they got a hardship, we're looking at it equally, not selective enforcement.
You should know that. Absolutely, it is.
Selective enforcement means you're doing favors for people that you know.
And the other thing you've got to keep in mind, this whole real estate thing's been blown out. It's a corrective cycle, it's happened before.
This is the depression, Joe. This is not a recession.
What's going to happen when real estate gets back to the norms, the prices are back into reality, okay? And we can't get mortgages in here because we're up to 60% now. Nobody's addressing that.
Up to 16% of what?
Right, Michael, we're 40% renters in here leased already.
I don't approve of renting anything. Do you know what the truth is?
We're not doing anything about it. This is all...
All right, all right. Nothing's going to be resolved, but...
It's a big downpour in this situation because it's a rental business.
All right, let's move along.
Right, put Motel Six on top of it.
Let's move along, be here on main. Okay.
Joe was right.
Moving along. Thank you, Stuart.
I can't resist, I can't resist this.
Okay, Ned, go ahead, Michael.
To clarify some, some of you, we mailed out some amendment changes at the annual meeting that was voted on in the end of December. And one of the, two things passed. We changed the annual meeting from between Christmas and New Year to the third week of January. We also passed the waiving of the reserves. But three, there were three changes that were grouped into one checkbox. And there were three amendment changes that should have been written separately so you could vote individually on those changes and not as a group. And because it wasn't separated, the vote was not valid because it didn't give you a choice on those three changes. So we have to, right now, we have to send out a mailing to all the owners regarding term limits of board members. We now have a choice of either one or two years going forward. Previously, it was three years. The state decided that the association should only have one or two-year terms for their board members, so this has to be voted on by the ownership. This is one of the amendment changes that will be being mailed in a large package to you in the next week or two. The other three, which were voted on but were not approved because they were, not because the membership voted for it, then the board didn't want it, but it was not, it was not in violation of 718 in that the amendment changes were not offered separately. So the three that needed to be separated are, number one, that the board should approve an amendment allowing existing tenants in good standing to remain when the unit is sold. Previously, there was a question whether that was legitimate, and they had to move out if a new owner bought the apartment with a tenant who may have been there ten years. Everyone approved that. But because it was grouped together with two other items, it has to be sent out again to the ownership, to the owners, to decide if they want it. It was approved, but we're going to have to approve it again. The second one was that the board also approved an amendment allowing rentals for any period up to a year. It could be a six-month rental, it could be a nine-month, or it could be a one-year. Previously, the rule was four months minimum. A lot of snowbirds want to come down for three months, and there are even people that want to be able to rent for just a couple of months. Previously, they were not allowed to do this. This would allow no set time period for the term of your lease. One lease per year was the previous law. The second, prior to 2003, we were allowed to rent twice a year. So a review committee recommended that we allow new owners to rent twice a year as it was 2003 and prior. As Linda will tell you, the vice president, we have a certain seasonable element to this community, and we want to, we don't want to lose that winter snowbird following the people that come here in the winter and enjoy the amenities that we have here as a resort. The third amendment that was voted on that has to be re-voted on is that the minimum time period in an amendment, the amendment allowing for unit owners to rent after six months, currently it's two years. You can't rent your apartment for two years after ownership. Scott was head of the amendment review committee, Scott Stewart was on it, I was on it. We recommended one-year moratorium from two years. To make it a little, six months was too short a time. It was not enough time to discourage outside investors. It wouldn't be fair to the owners who've gone here for many years and paid a special assessment, paid an SBA loan, and when they buy now, they inherit those things paid off. So it wouldn't be fair to allow outside investors to buy after, rent after six months, especially without upgrading the apartment. We have an amendment, if you read our current condo docs, we have an amendment which will be mailed to you because it was never actually mailed out. Last February 25th were the last three new amendments that were filed in circuit court. They are going to be mailed to you with these new amendment proposals. In that amendment proposal that we're mailing to you, that was approved, includes an investment opportunity program for current owners of the village to encourage the current owners of the village to buy the foreclosures and upgrade them to a certain architectural review standard and be allowed to rent them right away. Now, with this came the 25% cap. And officially, we report to the bank right now only around 10 or 11% because that's all we officially know. So we're addressing that as a problem to determine, and we have a very serious plan. Some of which we can't disclose because it's in the works, and we couldn't want to tip off the illegal owners who are here right now as to how we're going to get rid of them. But there is a very serious plan, which has begun in recent weeks, to determine who is here legally and who is not here legally. So the amendment change that we are proposing is that you be allowed to rent your unit after one year of ownership and after minimum water conservation upgrades. We spend way too much money on water here and in transfer of these properties. We can require that you put in a water conservation 1.6 gallons toilet instead of the four gallons of the 1800 toilets we have here in the village. Most of them are three and a half, four gallon flush toilets. And we spent $425,000 a year here on water, which is way above the unit average for condos in South Florida because we're wasting water, partly because we have old-fashioned toilets and partly because nobody reports their leaks. So we passed at last month's meeting a motion and a vote to inspect every one of 832 apartments for water leaks, water conservation, air conditioning drain leaks which are repeated. And under that authorization, we're allowed, as the association is allowed with notice, to do preventive maintenance inspections of an apartment. It's not an invasion of privacy, but the purpose of this is to conserve water and address leaks with people turning in their leaks. Our in-house maintenance will repair your sink. You pay for the faucet, and we'll install it for you. But we are installing free of charge every owner a flapper for every one of the 1800 toilets, if necessary, if it needs it. Every toilet, there are many, many toilets here that just run eight months a year when the snowbirds are up north. And we are wasting so much water. So this inspection serves two purposes. One, to conserve water, and the second, to do a census. The census is also being enforced at the gate with changes that are being made to the gate that we discussed with the property management company also this week. That the gate does not have the necessary information or the protocol to determine who comes here and who belongs here and who doesn't, and who lives here. And that's our fault. That's not the company that we pay 270 grand a year to for security. That's our fault for not providing the criteria, the protocol, and the information that we have in the office that they don't have at the gate. They don't, you know, they have no way of determining, there are a lot of people who live here illegally and they have barcodes. There are people who are living here illegally and they don't have barcodes at work. And this is largely a communication problem at the gate. But a census, underwater conservation, the gate being upgraded, updated only in terms of information that they have, the information they need to work with. And I understand five years ago, we had a protocol in place that seems to have evaporated because there hasn't been an active security committee here in some time. So the security committee is becoming very active, and security and the liquid maintenance and architectural review, water conservation are all being tied together and being addressed as committees, but with the same purpose in mind, to save water, find out who lives here, and to improve security. So the amendment change, these three amendment changes that were approved have to be resented as separate options.
The board is to accept...
What's that?
The board is to write out the conjunction...
The board wants to send in the...
So we are now in the, at the point of proposing that we send these changes to the owners for you to decide.
Before you do, the board has to speak. First of all, Michael, you cannot say that you could rent after one year because the board voted to send after six months. The board never voted to change it to one year. You can't, how has it been do that? So how can you send that?
Well, we have to correct that.
We have to.
We need to correct that. That was your recommendation.
My original recommendation. That is correct. But the board voted unanimously to make it six months.
The board did not vote...
The board did. Check your records.
Recommended sending that from the owners.
For six months.
If that's what you mean, the board wrote it.
The board wrote it, the recommendation. Now the board has to vote to make it a year. You can't say what you want to say.
I make a motion that we change the amendment to one year.
Jerry, second. I have a question. You have one for six months?
Yeah, six months. Okay, we have a motion, but you like to...
Is anyone against the year?
Any opposed?
Anyone against the year?
Take it out, start on the agenda.
Right.
Against the year. It's not your honor. It's not your decision.
What amendments are in the agenda?
The fourth term?
Yeah.
The fourth term amendment?
Right, right.
Can I ask an information question?
All right, so, anybody opposed?
Repose amendments.
Nobody opposed? Okay, it's, it's, it's tough.
Anybody opposed?
Nobody's opposed.
I have a...
Well, what he did was he changed it.
Didn't we vote, didn't we vote about this question?
Yes, we did, Mark, yes, we did.
Well, whose vote counts in this damn place? Is it the unit owners or the board, or does it have to be two?
It's the unit owners.
All right, we voted on this, did we not?
I agree.
Then how can you override the unit owner?
I wasn't there when it voted on.
It's the legality. We broke the Florida statute 718 from the way that they were sent out in progress. They changed by...
Who wrote the law? You think so?
I see Kim Canda back there, hold on, someone's kidding me.
I just have a quick question about, I know we've been talking about this for a while, and it's related to wasted money on the water transportation. When are the maintenance guys going to start this project and start going into the apartments and checking and see who has leaks?
Michael, that's what I have. What are they going in to check the water for leaks? What are they going in with the...
You're asking when we're beginning that, Kim? Are you going to be beginning that?
You cannot make that any time. It's not on the agenda.
No, no, she's... I'm thinking of something else.
I said, I asked a question of when they are the maintenance men going to start going into each and every apartment and checking for leaks.
Tonight, we have three volunteers that are going to go, we have Terry, right? And Mark volunteer?
And... Brad and Jim are going to go check for leaks.
They are going to go with one of our maintenance personnel. One building at a time, completing a building at one time. So we can take the water bill from that building from one month to the next, we'll know how much water we saved on that.
So they're going to go and say 2A needs a replacement for something, 3A...
But I'm going to start with Bordeaux.
A leak or whatever.
Do that whole building, and then you'll see a difference from one month, water bill to the next. There's a meter on that whole building only.
Talking about toilets, I think it's...
Uh, Mark, is that, shh, Mark, do you have a point you wanted to make?
Well, my point was, I thought that the unit owners had voted on the...
Uh, Doc, and, well, Mark, is that, uh... Mark, do you have a point you wanted to make?
Well, my point was, I thought that the, the unit owners had voted on the...
They did, but Mr. Samuel said that it was not, uh, it was, it was not, there was no affidavit of something or no affidavit of receipt.
I don't care what Mr. Samuel said. We voted.
Mr. Samuel doesn't say it. Your condo doc's saying it. I don't know what he's talking about.
He voted on it, it was voted on.
All right, then let me, then let me tell you what's wrong. Then let me tell you... Then let me tell you what's wrong with this process. This process suffers from a lack of information dispersal. And no one around this damn place knows what the hell is going on. And I think before you as a board start voting and turning down everything that we voted on three months ago or six months ago, there should be an informative letter that goes out to all the unit owners explaining what the hell is going on. And you don't make votes and change everything and screw everything up that we thought was already put to rest.
I would tend to agree with that, Mark.
Yeah, I think the owners deserve an explanation of why that form was, was sent out.
Why was it in Congress? The seven eighteen, not allowing people to vote for three thoughts in the same amendment?
Three separate amendments can be voted for as a group.
They weren't put out as three separate amendments. They were put out as one amendment with three thoughts. Now make it always separate. Hey, listen, it makes it, it makes it more difficult to pass because...
Okay, okay, before, we're not getting any...
If I vote for all of them, then it should be...
Jerry, Jerry, Jerry.
Yeah.
Jerry, Scott, hold on, we're not getting any. We just, this is becoming...
We should play this, this is the... It's a rejection.
In a minute.
Here's, here's what we need. I would suggest, and I can only suggest here, because we're going back and forth and no, no decisions are being made. The board, the board needs to sit, decide on the agenda, the amendments